Do that at a later point. And you'll have five minutes to speak and you'll be able to monitor that here on the timer.
And will they have their hand up since my first comments?
They will have the hand up.
Clock won't start until they get this around.
Until they get their hand up because, you know.
Right.
Mary Ann?
I do thank you for your time. I value your public participation after lunch and not before. I'd hate to be between you and food. I'll try to work that in.
Vicki and I have been long-term colleagues. We were in Superintendent's Institute together in the late 80s.
Yep.
Vicki was a superintendent outside of Chicago, I think, at the time.
Yes.
I was superintendent in Farmington and very well-respected, does a great job, pro-kid in the best, we're all pro-kids, but I mean really focused on student achievement. Thanks for being here, Vicki.
Thank you.
Not sure what you're doing, but I hope I don't say, I hope at the end of your comments...
You're never sure what I'm going to say, are you, Mike?
Right.
This is always a surprise.
Maybe I should have waited for the...
Well, the good news is that I think I came with some good news for you. So if you look at the handout that I gave you, the first thing that you'll see is this is our Michigan meat performance for Oakland County. And if you look at the first page that has a lot of colorful symbols on it and a line going across it, you'll see the performance for every single district in Oakland County. I'd like to call your attention to the left side of the page because you'll see a lot of symbols, X's and O's and squares and triangles, and you'll see that on that left side of the page, that's my districts that are very high poverty. It's your left-hand side of the page, you'll see Oak Park, Pontiac, Hazel Park, and you'll see that those symbols lead up to a line which is where performance is right now. So in those districts where in Oakland County, we have the highest percentage of minority students, the highest percentage of poverty students, and much of the lowest funding. You will see that we have been able to grow achievement anywhere from 25 to 40 percentage points in terms of the students proficient on the meat in grades three through eight. So we're very proud of that growth. It's been something very intentional that all of our districts have been working on, trying to implement the best practices in order to make that happen. On the far right-hand side of the page, you'll see those districts that have fewer challenges. They've been able to have high achievement for a very long period of time, and they've been able to maintain that high achievement. The second page I won't go over, but it shows almost the same story for reading language arts. We started higher in reading language arts than we did in math. And I'm going to save the fourth page for a little bit later in my comments. The reason I'm looking at that second page with you right now is because we have concerns in Oakland County. And the concerns are that what you see here in terms of very impressive improvement and what you see here in terms of very high growth could very well be disrupted by the reform package that is being considered in the legislature right now. And I know that you folks have been asked to weigh in on that legislative reform package. I know some of you have already weighed in, and I also know that later in this meeting you're going to be getting an update and a report on that. So I would like to address just a few of what those concerns are. And I want to preface it by saying first that I am not opposed to charters. The Oakland Schools ISD serves 20 charter schools in our county. We're glad to have them and we think we serve them very well. Some of them work beautifully, just like the schools on this sheet of paper I'm showing you on page two. And some of them don't work so well, just like some of the schools on this page are not yet working as well as we'd like them. In fact, if you look at that fourth page now of data, it is your top-to-bottom list by quartile. And you will see that the blue lines are the community governed schools in our county and the magenta line is the public school academies, the charter schools in our county. The public school academies that are in the 50th to 74th or 75th to 99th percentile are certainly public school academies that I would hope would be uncapped and that I would hope could grow across our state because they're doing very well. Just as we would want those community governed schools, the blue lines, that are doing very well, to continue to do well. But my concern is why would we uncap those schools in the bottom quartile? Why would we even think about it? And our data, this is Oakland County, every single school in Oakland County, our data I don't think is different than it is nationally. You know that, you've seen Superman movie. If they could have found better data, I think they would have, but they couldn't. So my concern is the FDA authorizes drugs before people are given the choice to take them. Cars go through safety assurances before people are given the choice to drive them. We have legislation being proposed where even though we have data giving us track records of how charter schools are doing, we have legislation that is not even going to look at that track record before we open Michigan doors and we take in Michigan children. Not only will we use Michigan public dollars, but what concerns me most is we will be taking time away from those Michigan children. And we should only be doing it for those schools that are already performing in the upper two quartiles, whether they're Michigan schools or whether they're national franchises. The data is out there, it's the national franchises that are dying to get in. Some of them are very good, so it doesn't matter if they're also profitable. But it is only the good ones we should be allowing in Michigan or we will be wasting our children's time as well as our taxpayers' money. I don't have time for the other two points I was going to make, so I'll just quit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Our second speaker is John Law.
I have a handout here. Couple of things I want to talk about just today. We talked about the odds, schools that are doing well. My question is what about the ones at the bottom? Why are they at the bottom? What is being done to help them? These are the lost schools, and there needs to be some program that examines and supports them. I know the governor's making this lost school program, and I guess that's supposed to take care of everything, but that's not the responsibility of that group. It's the responsibility of the State Board of Education that is elected statewide and it has general supervision and also advises the legislature about the requirements. So this is the body that should be talking about that. The other thing, I talked to this fellow from Lansing, I asked him, "What's the dropout rate?" And Lansing, we talked about the graduation rate. The dropout rate is 25% of those kids drop out of that school. What's being done with dropouts? We're not having a good job there. He had four Truant officers, now he has one to deal with the problems that they have in that system. The other thing is I talked about Holly Schools and his idea to commonize the financial system. It's just good business practice and common sense to have a standard financial system and that would allow you to gather data from all the schools very easily. He has not had a response yet to this letter. I don't know if it's just because I gave it to you, but it's something that deserves consideration and some consideration and courtesy to that individual. The graph here deals with two problems. One is performance and data. This chart is from Freeman's book that just came out. That used to be the United States. As it shows here, the United States is down at the bottom of the pile, and Michigan's in that pile. The other side, I went to a presentation by the House Physical Agency, and it's the only presentation I've ever seen that really talked about finances and money, even though it's a responsibility of this group. And in this, it shows the declining enrollment. So you have 177,000 fewer kids in the system. That's a billion dollars that's taken out of the appropriations. I don't understand how this crisis that we have, that money should be available to the remaining students. You had a nice picture in the paper there, Cassandra.
Thank you.
Talking about this charter school situation. I don't know who the other two people are, but I was here when you had some of the discussion about that. And that's a total catastrophe, taking assets away from the community. The Detroit situation of lost schools, nothing's going to happen for a year. So we have a, the governor's going to work in dog years and he's doing nothing for this coming year that we're in right now. And it's going to happen someday. That's really unacceptable. When you talk about finances, the thing that is really upsetting is when I read in the Detroit News about all the retirees collecting on their pensions. Then it has a list of them, and eight of them are school people, and their retirement is more than what the superintendent Flanagan is earning in his normal pay. So I don't understand how this thing is so out of control that they're getting these kind of retirements. That's just offensive. And there are community colleges and a couple of schools. This thing is out of control, the whole deal is. And then on top of that, they're going to have a meeting at Eastern Michigan University on the 10th, Thursday, at Welch Hall in room 205 with this new Save the School project that the governor's come up with. And this man's earning more than the superintendent of schools. And I don't know where the money's coming from, they're saying they're going to get it, people are going to contribute. It's just some other system. Bob was going to fix it in Detroit, now Mr. Roberts is going to fix it, now this new fellow's going to fix it. And in the meantime, nothing's happened. The schools are still continuing to go downhill. They just gave them another half billion dollars in bonds on top of the billion and a half they gave them before to fix the schools, and they're all working in that Taj Mahal down there at the Fisher Building. They should get out of that building today and go out and work in the schools. They have so many schools down there that have all been refurbished, they could go and work in those schools and see what it's like in the combat zone. The whole thing is a disgrace.
I've run out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Mojica.
Oh, the beer tax has been frozen too.
Hello, I'm Yolanda Mojica, and I'm here as a representative of MASP, the Michigan Association of School Psychologists. And traditionally, school psychologists are recognized in November, so we thought it would be a good idea to come and tell you what some of the things we usually do in schools. First, I would like to tell you a little bit of an experience I had just a few weeks ago, and then list of some of the things that traditionally I do in the schools in my everyday work. And so part of the story is that about a few weeks ago, the principal of one of my schools, elementary schools that I am assigned to, called me and said, "We need you right now. We are in crisis right now and we need, as part of the crisis team, you need to come." One of our third graders had been shot in the head and leg the night before in front of his aunt's house, and the child had been caught in crossfire among, it seems like, gang members. And so he was shot and one of the adults that was with him was actually killed. So all the kids were obviously at school, they were upset. So he was at the hospital, and many of the students, as I was talking with them, they cried and they, and many of them just brought back a lot of the violence that they have witnessed. And what I was stunned is that when every single, every single student I talked with, and we had several small groups and individual talks with students, everyone told me that it is just procedure at the home, that they have, they know exactly what to do when they hear shots. Everyone, we usually have fire drills or whatever in our homes, well, they have drills of what happens when the crossfire starts. And some would say, "Well, I take my two little siblings and we lay down between the beds and others under the bed. Others go to the basement when they have a room where there has no windows and they don't get out until mother comes and takes them out." So the stories, I just went on and on, and I just, I was just appalled at how the students come to school just carrying a heavy burden, fearing that they, that a family member could be shot or they can be shot too and die. And so I kept thinking all day long, you know, we've been talking about AYP for several days, and we just forget that the kids just come to school with carrying this burden, and how can we expect them to concentrate and on their academic tasks if they're feeling frightened, they're feeling anxious and insecure? So this experience just further reinforced my belief that my role as a school psychologist is not limited to working with individual students or evaluating, but to work in ensuring that our students come to a school that is safe, predictable, and positive. Only then can our students really concentrated in their tasks and then our achieved, I'm sorry, their academic achievements improved. My role as a school psychologist has changed dramatically from seven years ago in which I was mostly responsible for identification of children with disabilities. And now I am, I have, I'm doing a variety of things that are completely different from what I was doing. Now, from working with individual students, I'm working with several teams usually, with school teams, with district teams, and planning for school-wide or district-wide systems. I am presently assigned to two elementary schools. I'm the external behavior coach for seven MyBlissey schools, and I'm a member of the district response to intervention leadership team. And the district assessment team, and also the district assessment team, all this in Flint Community Schools. I'm also a trainer for the MyBlissey program. I'd just like to list you some of the things that I traditionally do. I sat down in three grade level, in the last two weeks, I sat down on three grade-level meetings, helped the teachers analyze student assessment results, and planned for instruction based on those test results. I met with intervention teachers of one of my schools to help them select tests that are appropriate for progress monitoring, analyze the benchmark tests, and plan for instruction. I met with the leadership teams of both of my schools. We reviewed school-wide and individual student behavior referral data by using the SWISS program, and we planned revisions to our school-wide positive behavior support system. Students with four, six referrals were identified and for tier-two training. I, eventually, I'm, I've done a lot of things, and what I really would like to emphasize is how we are expanding our role from working with children to really doing system-wide kind of help. And so I am leaving you with a brochure from National Association of School Psychologists, and just to remind you of some of the things we do and the important work we do in the schools.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Wood. I have to change, so I'll take a packet.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Mary T. Wood and I live at 27533 Santa Ana in Moore, Michigan. I'm passing out to you a packet that, interesting, the cover one that I gave you, I came before the State Board in 2002, actually nine years ago. For those that were on the board, it may look familiar. We had a different group of people at the time, a different superintendent. I hope maybe this might make a different impact here today. I do make reference in the actual ruling of the Supreme Court from their decision July 31, 1997, in regards to the case of whether charter schools were actually public schools. And the conclusion was as outlined there, but what I want to focus on is number four, that public school academies are subject to the leadership and general supervision with the State Board of Education to the same extent of all other public schools. The state controls the money. The principle means by which the State Board exercises its power over all school districts is through the, is through the State School Aid Act. I want to jump over then, though, to the third page, which talks about balanced leadership for lasting change. Now, the Michigan Council for Charter School Authorizers have put together this Balanced Leadership for Lasting Change document, which they circulate, in fact, they used it to as part of their Senate testimony that they had before the Education Senate. So I'm lifting some information out of that that I'd like to read through with you. On page seven, there's a title called Charter Contract Ownership Issues. "Since the issuance of a charter contract is a public function performed by the authorizing body on the state's behalf, no person or entity has any ownership rights in the charter contract issued to the charter school nonprofit corporation. While the board may choose to retain and utilize a private company to assist the school management functions, the board is ultimately accountable for compliance with the contract, academic performance, and the effective use of funds. The lack of standing and the legal provision against having a private property right or ownership in a charter contract was intentionally included within the definition of a charter contract and other provisions of the Revised School Code to ensure that the public, through the authorizing body, maintains ultimate control over the school." I've come before you before, and I cited here below this is actually the email from Grand Valley State with one of their charter schools that basically states that they can't touch anything with that school because it in essence is owned by national heritage. If the board was to discontinue their contract, the only thing that would exist would be the board itself standing on the sidewalk. Those are my words. Further in this report, it states that contract oversight, if a particular charter school application or contract does not comply with the Revised School Code or all applicable law, the State Board, through the superintendent of instruction, can reject the application or contract by denying school-state aid funding to the charter school. This mechanism provides the State Board with significant control over the charter school contract in Michigan. See, now we're in agreement with the Supreme Court and with the authorizers. Academy contracts have come before the Michigan Department of Education with the public knowledge that these schools are being created and opened by the for-profit management companies themselves, not just national heritage, but other ones. My issue started with a for-profit company. That's what brought me to this table to begin with. I had no idea about national heritage, but they are the largest one, with 44 schools, with roughly 700 children. Do the math of what the state aid per child is. My calculator went off the screen, so I couldn't calculate how many zeros was behind that. But this is a lot of money that they are being issued with the direct conflict of interest that they have with their authorizer, being handed these contracts with these public boards having no public rights to doing anything with these schools. The State Board of Education must prohibit the funding of these contracts, and the bigger problem is now how do you fix the wrong that has been going on within these so-called public schools that are currently operating and receiving state funds? So I am leaving it here on the table with you. There's one more sheet that I gave behind, which clearly states from Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers again, this is pretty much lifted from old documents as well that Central Michigan had put out defining the relationship that management contracts must have with their boards, they must be arms-length agreements. And I just got done reviewing a contract down in the Charter School Department for the new National Heritage High School that's opening in Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, where in the application page itself, it said that Prep Net, an arm of national heritage, will be the contract, will be the management company, and this is by agreement of the board, of which had yet to even be appointed. I'm appalled by the misappropriation of our tax dollars to these private companies. And just to throw out one number that I calculated out, with 44 schools, after five years of national heritage, profit off the lease of these buildings to the tune of approximately $50 million a year just on rent. That would be otherwise classroom dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think that's the end of public participation. Unless someone has a form? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for taking the time to speak with us and making the trip to be here. We're going to go back to kind of the morning, or what we thought would be the morning, and it got away from us a little bit, but it was all good, so. And this is the item that I'll ask Sally, Sally Vaughn and Abby Groff to join us at the table. It's on the professional learning policy standards and guidance. This is the, this is the kind of thing that if possible, issues that you may have with some of this would be helpful to be brought up today. It's not last chance. It's going to go out for public comment. We're working to align policies to address the goals of getting all students' career and college ready, so that they can pursue their post-secondary goals and aspirations. And we have a group of stakeholders, representatives of professional organizations, colleges and universities, as you would expect, department staff, that developed this professional learning policy and standards that are now ready for review and comment from the broader community. Improving professional learning for educators and support staff in schools and districts, obviously, is the crucial step in transforming our schools and improving academic achievement. And Sally, if you want to pick it up there. It's anticipated, by the way, that the policy statement and standards would come back to the board in January, roughly January, is our thinking now. Sally?
And as you were talking about the beating the odds this morning, you were looking at the trends that were probably read over and over again in some, from some of the school buildings. The one that I probably would have pointed out was that they were all talking about professional learning and professional learning communities, and that was another common theme, which segues very nicely into this revised policy for professional learning. This has been a long time coming. We started the stakeholder group, I think it was in September of 2010, so it's a year and at least a couple of months in the making. But we began it because we had a number of significant reforms that were occurring in the state, going all the way from some of the race to the top legislation, but obviously into the educator effectiveness and the educator evaluators, and knowing that the ultimate goal of those educator evaluations is to help teachers and administrators improve, which leads into professional learning. So we decided, we took a look at the existing board policy and with our stakeholder group, it was a little bit cumbersome. It had not been updated for a number of years, and it was not what the stakeholder group thought was particularly friendly because it, like I said, it was just a little bit cumbersome. So we've tried to streamline the policy. You'll see the standards are very similar to what you adopted in the past, and decided to develop a companion document that would walk through the guidelines. So you'll note that the, also, there's a change from professional development to professional learning, which reflects some of the changes in the field as we start to say, and really focus on the purpose of educators, is that they really are in the process of learning. So that's a nuance as far as what's being changed in that field. The stakeholder group, I've had, worked with a number of stakeholder groups since I've been in the department, and I don't think I've ever seen one that has been as committed as this one. Attendance tends to go, kind of fall down after you have maybe a year of meetings, and this is a group that not only continues to meet and has very, very good attendance and participation, but they want to continue to meet, and have actually made a commitment that if and when the board approves this, that they will use their various associations to help us spread the word about the policy, about the guidelines, and really help to get those used in school districts. So I'd like to thank a couple of people. Amy Colton, who has been here since this morning, has been very patient. Amy was here. Amy's the executive director of Learning Forward Michigan, and you may know Learning Forward Michigan by its previous name, which was the Michigan Association, the Michigan Staff Development Council. And they have changed their name to reflect again this new trend in all of our professional learning. Amy's been critical to our work and has just been very, very supportive of the team. Claudette Rosmussen from the Great Lakes East Comprehensive Center, who is not here today, but they have been providing us with both financial and technical support as we've developed the policy and the standards, and also worked with our stakeholder group. Deb Clement's back there before she left me to take on a new job. Deb really was working with Amy and Claudette to make sure that the group was working and convening them, putting the agenda together. So Deb, thank you for that. And now Abby, who has also been integrally involved in the last couple of months in putting the document into the shape it is. So a lot of thanks to a lot of people, including Pat McNeil over here, who's also been one of our standby persons on the committee, coming to almost all the meetings. So with that being said, you have before you really three documents. One is the policy, and you will notice that it is a much streamlined policy that sets out the broad picture of what the group really felt that it would be important for the State Board to say to constituent districts about the learning. I won't read it to you, I'm assuming that you have read that, but you'll notice that it does really specify what an effective learning system, professional learning system must do. what an effective learning system, professional learning system, must do. The second page are the standards, and in the previous, in the document that this one is replacing, the board had adopted the standards that were developed by the National Council of Staff Development. That now is also called Learning Forward, so it's the new national name. And what the committee or the stakeholder group is recommending, that these have also just been updated by Learning Forward, and the recommendation of the stakeholder committee is that these be reviewed by the public, obviously by you, and then adopted, if those are still meeting everyone's needs. The last document, as I said, we really felt we needed, the committee felt that they really needed to give some support and some guidance to the districts on what this means. And it's long. I mean, that's going to be one of the challenges, but I think as the stakeholder group worked through it, they really felt it was important to identify different roles and to outline four different roles in the education system, what they should be doing. And Abby's worked on this extensively, trying to make it as streamlined as possible. My guess is we'll get some feedback from either UN or the field that there may be some other ways to further streamline it. But I think there was some pretty strong consensus among the group that they really wanted to identify various groups and what their role in professional learning should be.
Abby, Julie, Dan?
Okay. So with that, like Mike said, if you've got questions or comments that we should look at before we take this out, we'll take it out for public comment and look at any comments and feedback we get, and then we would anticipate coming back to you, as Mike said, at the January meeting.
Cassandra?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I just have a couple of things. A couple of them are very minor, but one is, which is not so minor, is in the past, we were, we kind of got into the habit of including a list of the referent group that worked on the project. Is that something we could do again?
Yep. Actually, I don't know why we didn't do that, but yes, absolutely.
The second thing, and like I said, this is very minor, but on page nine, at the bottom, it says includes a variety of qualitative and quantitative measures. Do you see what I'm talking about?
I see it.
It's repeated twice there.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
And then the final one, maybe I'm missing something. On page 15, it makes reference to Appendix C for a detailed matrix that translates each indicator and outcome, but Appendix C is not a matrix, it's just a list of resources.
Thank you for that, so we can clean those up before it goes out. Thanks, Cassandra.
Yep.
Good catch. Thank you. I think it was Eileen and then Nancy.
Continuing in the minor revision suggestion model, mine is more a philosophical question. On page 14, when you discuss continuing education units, sorry, I'm having trouble going. Hang on just a second. I would like very much, I recognize the complexity of trying to say that things that are valuable to teachers may not be academically oriented, but where you say, on the bottom of page 14, SBCU's can also be in for non-traditional activities, such as serving as a mentor, supervising coordinated teachers, student teachers. I would like, if it's possible, to say that instead of non-traditional activities, to say something more like non-academic or professional activities, something that, and I'd like to lead it back to things that actually have observable or increase student outcome. And the reason for that is it's such a broad mixture. It's everything from, let's see, serving on school committees or completing national board certification. So if there's a, what I don't want to do is, I've been on many day trips for the board where it's been a CEU credit, but it has nothing to do with the specialty that the teacher is teaching or anything that really can produce student outcome. And I know that we've had these discussions already. How do you lead everybody back to meaningful experiences? I remember when I first came on the board, one of the jokes was that you'd get a master's degree in basket weaving or basketball and still be teaching physics. So we're so far removed from that, but I would love to see all of this be consistently driving towards student outcome. And it's the language, it's not the intent. Obviously, those activities would lead to good things.
Yeah, and there has been some discussion also with some of the legislators about, you know, whether or not that's really professional development, where do you draw the line? Yep? Okay, thank you.
Good points. And Eileen, unfortunately, we're not quite past the masters in anything to get a change in the salary schedule. And that would be one that I think most teachers would agree is really going to be beneficial to everyone to try to have it, at least in the arena in which one teaches.
You can sign me up for any legislative activities I have to do to help with that.
Thank you. I'm sorry for, Nancy, thanks.
I really appreciate this. It's obviously a labor of love, or at least almost love. One of the big concerns I've had since the very inception, well, probably not since the inception of this, since I wasn't on the board, if there was an inception of this, but since we started our conversations most recently, has been the interface that exists or does not exist between teacher candidates and teacher preparation institutions and their learning, and professional learning, once you've been hired or at least recruited and then hired, into an existing teaching situation. And I think we miss an opportunity if we do not draw that interface. It is difficult for teacher preparation institutions sometimes to listen to our rant about how they're not applying themselves to what we have done at the policy level, here at the state level, at the legislative level, at the board level, but we don't take the opportunity to draw those connections from teacher preparation requirements to professional learning. And so I'm not, and I wish I was bright enough to be able to just say, ah, it's on page whatever, just say this. I can't do that. But as I read through this, I was struck by, it's like we go through teacher preparation, done. We start once you're hired and never the two interface. And so I'm wondering if there isn't some way that we can, I don't know, in our headings, in our standards, in our, whatever it is, create that interface so that it's crystal clear that teachers don't start their professional learning once they are hired, but rather they started their professional learning when they were in teacher preparation institutions, and those institutions were reflective of what they would then need to know in their professional learning cultures once they were hired. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and Flor, what is it? In Kate, one of them has that continuum.
It's a continuum of teacher development that in Kate developed, and we've looked at that, and we've done a lot of work with the individualized professional development plan, and we are suggesting that that be started at the teacher preparation program level and continues throughout the teacher's professional career, so that it's not just new teachers, it's just not veteran teachers, but you start it at that point where they're doing their internship and help them to continue to build on their practice and developing their practice.
And I appreciate that, and I think that's a great thing, but I guess, I should do this, sorry. I can get my playground voice out, but I shouldn't have to, I guess. I guess what I'm striving for, maybe it's difficult, I don't know, but what I'm striving for is reference in this document that gives pause to teacher preparation institutions on the one hand, that, oh, in order for them to do this, we had to have done this back here. And likewise, for professional learning opportunities in the field, that, oh, in order for us to be successful with our students, we have to look back to see where it was they came to us from in order to make this happen. And so I'm just asking if there's some way of drawing that connection together, that's all.
We'll take a look at the continuum Flor is talking about, because that may do it, Nancy, and maybe we can add a paragraph or two that would say that there is that, that there is that relationship. We'll take a look at it.
Kath, and then Eileen?
Yeah, it's very impressive, and I'm so glad we're paying attention to professional development. I've been concerned about it for a long time, but one of the things, we had this presentation before lunch, and it must be in here someplace, but I don't know where now. How do we, how do we, how do we teach? I'm the only one that has to do this?
Well, your voice has spoken. Okay. It's bright, but it's small.
Oh, thank you. Anyway, the thing I'm trying to say is, we've learned this morning that we really have to help teachers understand their own unknown biases, that, you know, that they, how they treat people, and how they think of people, and how they react to people. And we talk about that in teacher preparation, with diversity, that's our, but it's not enough, I don't think. We don't really emphasize it enough. How do teachers learn to deal with people who are different from themselves, and to understand them and to not react negatively to them because they're different? And I don't know how that's dealt with in the professional development, because we had to do it more than just in teacher preparation. We had to help incumbent teachers to do better with that. Is that in here someplace that I missed it?
No, we did not include the content of the professional learning, because the professional learning is supposed to be based on what the individual teacher needs. That comes through that evaluation process, as well as sitting down with the administrator and other teachers. So this was not intended to say that teachers need A, B, C, D, and E. You've got it in your teacher preparation standards, so if a teacher needed that, then the idea is that it would come through the individual professional development planning, that this is a need that I have.
Oh, this is for each teacher to develop their own plan. Okay, the other thing, so maybe we need something in addition to this, because the other thing I've learned in some of these study groups I've been on and all, is that the best professional development is done at the school level, do it as a team, learn how to work together, and...
And that's actually the intent of this, is to, as you heard, the professional learning communities where it's job embedded and continuous, instead of taking teachers out and having them go to a one- or two-day workshop. That's partly what's driven a lot of this, is to start the conversation around the state about what's effective professional development. If we want teachers to improve their craft, they can't do it by going to five days of different kinds of workshops.
Right.
The embedded job description, the embedded job learning is really where, the job embedded learning is where we're hoping that the discussion will lead the way, just like you heard the schools this morning, the ones that are really most successful, they're having, the teachers are having conversations with each other about actual student work and sharing their own expertise.
Right.
So you don't always have to bring up the outside expert. I mean, sometimes that's appropriate, but a lot of times, a more effective improvement of your teaching craft is going to be through those conversations among teachers.
Well, is that, the how-to is what I want to get at, and is that going to be a separate document? Part of it is in here.
It's in here as far as job embedded.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Eileen, and then Richard, and then Paul, and then Nancy. Eileen and Richard, Paul, Nancy, I don't know if I said that loud enough.
Sorry. I had an interesting experience. I went to a conference on the 28th called Preparing a Solid Foundation for Teacher Preparation Transfers, which was a group of community colleges meeting with four-year TPI institutions. And one of the things that got brought up there was how threatening it is right now for TPIs to try and figure out what changes are going to happen to them for graduate school. And I just wanted to point out that I know somebody who was the school superintendent in Sacramento, California, who simply went to, about 15 years ago, to his local TPI, and at a time when employment was increasing dramatically for teachers, said that if they would design with him a system that worked for his schools, which he knew because of their accountability measures would work for everything in California, that he would hire everybody who came out of the program. And it led to a really unique collaboration, because he made them get learn formative assessment, you know, things that you just wouldn't ever have without somebody saying to you, I have to have teachers who do this. And I tried to bring that up at the conference, that 10 years from now, everything, graduate schools, CEUs, everything could be different, that there's tremendous opportunity for ed schools who understand what increases student achievement in the classroom, to help districts who don't have a good idea or a good method of doing a professional development, professional learning opportunities with the district. So we're moving into other discussions with the opening up of this door, and I want to make sure, because there aren't any models of that sort in Michigan that I know of, that the ed schools are aware that there are other possibilities for them beyond what they're doing, but we need to have it all linked to student outcome.
Thank you. Richard?
On page eight, maybe a misunderstanding of the statement here under scope. This policy applies to all teachers and auxiliary and on teaching staff and administrators in local and intermediate school districts, family and community members, higher education institutions, and professional education associations. Seems a little, I mean, if it does apply to all of these, it does apply in the same way, it seems a little grandiose to me.
Well, that was a lot of the discussion in the stakeholder group about how broad to go, and so I think that's something we'll be looking for the public comment to see, is that so broad that it's hard to get your hands around it, and does it need to be more focused? Abby, you weren't part of those conversations, but Deb, you were in on part of those discussions. Do you want to add to it? Why don't you just come on down here, Deb? Sorry, but she's going to know the details, because she was in all the discussions.
Much of the discussion with the stakeholder group focused around, you know, what is everybody's role in this system of professional learning? Because what this policy is about is identifying what those quality indicators of a professional learning system is. And so everybody has a role in that, and so what this document was attempting to do was to define what was everybody's role. So even at that level, with parents and communities, school districts do engage in professional learning for those groups as well. So we included them in here. Now, if you look, you know, if you've got time to read the specifics, we, the group did identify specifically what the, how the roles are different depending on what particular group that we were talking about in the system. But we were saying that everybody, if we were going to have a quality professional learning system in place, then everybody has a role in that, and we were trying to define that in this policy. Or I should say, the group was trying to define that in the policy, or in the guidance.
And this is a time to, Richard, I mean, this is a time for a board to perhaps continue to discuss that a little bit before we put it out for public comment, and so feel comfortable to gently keep pushing each other back and forth a little bit.
Well, I understand that, I understand that this policy, that developing teachers and their effectiveness is going to have something to do with all these other individuals and roles. I assume you're troubled by saying a policy affects family and community members in part, which I sort of also understand. Well, it does sound odd to describe professional learning for, I mean, the parent training, sure, but professional learning for parents and children, I think it seems quite a...
Probably terminology. There may be a way to phrase this kind of thing, where a policy can impact those who the policy is clearly in its balance to impact, and the other stakeholders are participants in this family of works in some way. I'm just appreciating your comments and trying to look for how to appropriately phrase the inclusiveness, but also, the policy can only directly insist on affecting some people in an institutional system.
Yeah, maybe a preparatory statement or observation, like school is really a system composed of many roles, and our aim is to equip teachers and all professionals to be more effective in those roles, and to coach, since parents are effective, to coach or give them, equip them for effectiveness, and give the system a focus, something like that.
So we work in that particular statement?
Yeah. Sounds good. Paul, and then Nancy.
Yes, I think one of the things here when we talk about professional development, we had a statement earlier, do more with less, and we certainly are aware of that. We take a look at what we've been able to do in Oakland County in a role that I'm fulfilling is tapping into the resources that are available within teacher leaders. And in fact, there'll be a substitute filling in for me this evening in our professional learning community. What we've done, particularly in the business management, marketing, and technology, that's the program that I lead as the cluster facilitator, this is exactly the type of prescriptive professional development that we've been able to drive, where we study and analyze data, and let's talk about the math section that we're working with, whatever the... and let's talk about the math section that we're working with, whatever the content is, and figure out best practices to teach and share and do. And we've been able to see that it's been, it's only been in existence for one year, we're in year two, and I think that it's a very good opportunity for this type of professional development to occur and continued lifelong learning, but you're utilizing the resources of the teachers themselves. And so they're able to be in there and share and work with it. And so I think any of those types, and we go, we go back to teacher preparation institutions, you know, that whole concept of teacher leadership. I, as I, my role this year, and I've been exposed to so many things, I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to serve in this role as teacher of the year and meet a lot of different people and see that, I think that that, that's a very big important picture that we need to take a look at. And I think it's even affected some of my thoughts of where my career may go. I think it's more leading toward this area of, you know, professional development, but more important, teacher leadership. Those leaders still need to be able to be engaged in the classrooms. And typically what happens in education, in order to have a broader spectrum, you leave the classroom and you move into administration. So I think there's some seeds there planted, and I'm personally experiencing it there that's helped me not only grow as a professional, but also it's helped then ultimately lead to increased student achievement for what we're doing within our professional learning clusters. So I think that's, that's good pieces that you have there for that.
And just a little advertisement while you bring it up, is that's the rulemaking that people can comment on now related to three-tier and all the rest of that, because that's essentially what it's trying to do, is what Paul just described. So, there has been a systemic incentive to leave teaching to supposedly better oneself. And if anything, it's always, I don't know if the word is oxymoronic, you could help me with that probably, John. And, and this really is going to say there's a path that is appropriate and, and really rewards great teachers to stay in the profession, but that's out there now and we're getting a lot of feedback. Nance?
As I listened to what you said, Sally, about the difference in this document versus the document established by, for teacher preparation as to exact content areas that needed to be achieved, I thought, aha, there's the, there's the glue right there. And so on page, it's three of my document, I don't know if it's three of yours or not. It's where the professional learning policy statement is, and it says, "The design, development, and implementation of an effective professional learning system must colon," and then there are a number of bullets. And the first one is to address the learning goals and objectives. I would, I would recommend, I would suggest that you consider, starting that out, recognize the learning goals and objectives achieved in teacher preparation institutions and continually address the learning goals and objectives established by district, school, and staff throughout their careers. Because that's the glue that I'm trying to talk about, about how we have this established already in teacher preparation, but we have to go on from there with their learning and take into consideration the content that they learned at that time and adjust it to the application once they're now professionals. Does that help at all?
Yeah, that may be a good, I probably would do it in a separate bullet.
And that's fine.
Is there something that I like about how you're, by having a separate bullet, I think it almost makes the link stronger.
And that's fine, but I thought maybe that might be the key place where you might want to put that in, because I think you'll get a lot of questions about, very legitimately that was asked, well, where is the content that Kathy brought up, you know, here? Oh, well, we had that over here.
Gotcha. Okay. Good, thanks.
Good point. Well, great. Any other discussion? And it'll be more time, this will be brought back to you in January, as I said, for approval. And it's, I want to thank all the partners and, and together with Sally and her team. I mean, it's, it's really, this is the kind of stuff that sometimes seems a little, not as concrete as some of our other actions, but actually more influential in, in helping student achievement, I think.
Yeah. I didn't want to say that I've heard from people who participated that this was the best, as you said, this was the best stakeholder group that they've been involved in in a long time.
These guys are zealots.
Yeah.
They're in it for the long haul. Yes, they are.
That's the other reason, Cassandra's point, we'll get the list back in, the kind of format issue somehow. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next, is there any, we remove, we removed one of the items, as you know, but is there any discussion regarding criteria for grant program? That would be the one left, which is the food assistance, the emergency food assist, Nancy, please.
Just a comment. Is Mary Ann here? I don't even know.
Yes, she is. She's back here.
Yeah, there she is, I see her.
Around several heads here. I'd like to thank the recommendation that you go from the two-tiered system of, in your food assistance program, the two-tiered criteria for who gets what, to the one-tier, because I know as a, as a, as a user of this system, I know that this is very, very helpful, and so I'd just like to thank you for doing that. I don't know if it was you or the federal government that did that, but take credit for, for it even so. This is such an essential part to our children's success, being well, well-fed, highly nutritious food, and being able to be a part of a system that allows them the brain energy and ability to be, to learn, that I just, I can't, I can't say enough about our emergency food assistance program. It just, it's so essential. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And while we're talking Mary Ann, I don't want to miss the opportunity that last week, I thought she just did a sensational job. She had her entire team in here, and they each built, what would you call it? To describe their mission and function, what would you call the...
Pumpkin display.
Pumpkin display. So...
The technical term.
Yeah. Well, say, would you mind, come on up once, I mean, I think, just one minute here, because it really, I think it was a way to capture, for me, an understanding of the complexity of some of what goes on in your division that, that I thought I knew and didn't know as much, but just the process for a minute.
Did they, did they have masks?
Did they have one?
Masks for Halloween.
Well, you'll...
Well, it was a, do I have to punch something? No. It was coincidentally on Halloween, but I just said that each one of our groups, and I have eight different groups that report to me, had, could collectively, collaboratively come up with a display, and it had to have at least one three-dimensional pumpkin in the display. And it had to show what their mission and their work was in their particular unit. And so we had eight, and it was a, couldn't be bigger than two feet by two feet, and you know, it was pretty, pretty structured.
One was tall.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a height limit, so some were pretty tall, three, four feet tall. And we had a display around here. Then each group had three minutes, and we used your timer so that they could only use three minutes to describe what their display was showing. And it was fun, I think. They had fun, I had fun. We had some special people as judges, and it gave an opportunity for each of our areas to hear what the other area did, including our superintendent, who joined us that day.
It was, the judges were a few, the directors and others. Did we happen to film that? Did we happen to...
Well, there are pictures, I haven't even seen the pictures, but...
I think, we'll find a way to attach it to mid-month or something. I think you'd find it interesting, and maybe we need to think about, I mean, I didn't realize that was happening until I walked by and looked in the glass window that day, but it was, I think it was a fascinating way, and we'll think more about it in the debrief, about how we might share things like that in a more economical way with the board.
There was one other part, because...
No, that was enough, I didn't really want...
All right.
I'm kidding.
What name did you give this?
This part was the food part. Because it was Halloween, they thought we should have food, and I didn't want to bring in food for everyone, so I said, "I'll give five extra bonus points on the score sheet if you would bring in something, some treats, they could be healthful or not, for 24, like 24 servings." Well, we must add 2,400 servings. We had the cutest things, we had things that were little witches' broom sticks and apples that had nuts in them that made it look like teeth. And I, you know, very, very inventive, creative people on the food end of it, to go along with their very inventive and creative displays. So I was extremely pleased with their creativity, and I think they learned a lot from each other.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
What did you call it? Mary Ann, I didn't hear the, what you, everybody laughed at, I didn't hear...
What did I call it?
Yeah.
Well, actually, it was the great pumpkin head contest. That's what it was.
You said something else before, but I don't know what it was.
Pumpkin, pumpkin display. I said we did a pumpkin display.
You can see we, we take our work very seriously here in the department.
Yeah, we do.
And, you know, I, I thought what was nice was kind of the laid-back team building that was part of this, even if that wasn't the main thing. So, nice job, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna, we just did lunch, and we're coming back to good morning, good afternoon. The time is now 2:20, 2:19, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of November 8, 2011 is hereby called to order. First item is approval of the State Board of Education minutes of the whole, committee of the whole meeting of October 11th. There a motion, please? It's moved by John. Support of Eileen. Any corrections, conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same. President's report. John, please.
You just reminded me that I heard someone did a detailed study of like 40,000, someone did a detailed study of like 40,000 judicial cases of review and determined that people were more willing to agree to let someone go after, if they met after lunch, or the cases that came up right after lunch. And it actually was fitting into that discussion this morning about what are the reasons and all the detailed data that those folks are using to determine who's sending people for disciplinary action? It was just an interesting factoid. But I'm, I'm going to report in a pumpkin theme or motif, I guess. No, so four things I just wanted to mention briefly. One, I am, given the board's leadership and Mike's leadership on our own anti-bullying model policy and our strong encouragement that we, in a really nonpartisan way as a board, welcome and want to see some complementary state legislation that does present an effective encouragement to districts to have effective anti-bullying efforts. I'm eager and happy that we're going to, I hope reaffirm in a bipartisan, nonpartisan way, our commitment to same shortly here. So, thank you, everybody, for working on that. I did appreciate, Mike, and he'll probably touch on it, the waiver, NCLB opportunity that we're going to take the time over the next few months to do that thoughtfully with a lot of input, because as we talked about last time, I think it's, it's a text about what our learning program in Michigan is going to look like that's real important. And one small issue, and there are probably many more, you know, Kathy got a note and I got a call from the after-school folks and the Mott Foundation, and you're probably aware of this, who were very anxious, given that in part the 21st century school after-school learning national program is a function of significant Michigan leadership and Mott Foundation leadership, that there's a, in that waiver opportunity is a voluntary kind of checkbox that states could choose that would opt out of using those resources for after-school and to some other things, not a requirement. But that's just an example of many kind of big boxes that can or cannot be checked in this waiver, that I think it's important for us to all thoughtfully wrestle with. So I appreciate your, you and your team's willingness to, and I'm sure you'll hear from the Mott Foundation if you haven't already on that one. The, the charter choice legislation that's moving that we all discussed last time, you know, obviously would have been preferred if we had spoken with one voice, but it's a difficult issue with the polarized viewpoints, and so I think we have all weighed in thoughtfully and based on our principled positions. And I do think, I'm, I'm hopeful that there is space and opportunity as that legislation moves to closure for some quality and accountable charter school expansion, that this can be done more thoughtfully with the input. And I encourage everybody to continue to input into that process actively as, as you see fit. And, but I'm a little concerned just because there's some notes that we were trying to hit in our consensus statement, particularly on things, and Mike and I talked briefly about this, the dual enrollment and enhancing early college credit taking, our companion pieces of legislation. We did not speak to that because we didn't get that done. We're on record, I believe, as a board, pretty strongly saying we want to, A, expand those kinds of opportunities for all young people, and that they are very powerful for both high flyers like the governor to advance quickly, but they're equally even more important for at-risk students who don't think they're college material or who aren't engaged. And the data shows that pretty profoundly, that early college credit taking, early college experiences, the, you know, we heard from Kalamazoo and others, the numbers, the incredible percentages of Hispanic and African-American kids taking AP courses for the first time. That is really potent stuff. And I know Mike and the department have been providing some input into, the governor may say more about this in his talent workforce special message, we'll see what he says, but we also said as a board, we need to change the, the funding structure, so that currently there's disincentive for K-12 schools to let kids go, to participate in more of that. And I just personally, but I hope we might come back as a board after the dust settles and say more about what we want to see as that kind of legislation advances and dual enrollment and things, because it's important and a potential powerful note. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. If I may, I think it's worth commenting on that, we've been using the language concurrent college opportunities to kind of be an umbrella that seems to be more, it doesn't separate early college, dual enrollment, college credit in kind of a traditional high school setting. And then the money thing, one thing that we've been talking about in-house is that if we got to a point where you could imagine, whether you had an early college or not, that all, pretty much all children could get a year's worth of college credit within the four years of high school, and I think we could imagine that, particularly with the high school requirements. And, I mean, Paul, what's your average student leaving with right now in your program in terms of number of college credits?
Sure, they'll range anywhere, you know, six to 14 to 18. I mean, when we look at it, really just depends on the amount of time that the student was with us in our program.
Right.
And that would be just particularly articulated credit.
Right.
That's not counting some of the direct credit options that our students are able to leave with from the program.
And the reason I mention that is if we could imagine leapfrogging to that time when we really think that all kids would leave with, you know, it could be a variety of ways, that relationships with their community college, a four-year, the, the dual enrollment, then the money almost starts to take care of itself. Because my problem when I was superintendent 20 years ago, and we had this going with OCC, was that I couldn't anticipate the teachers in the long run, or even in, sometimes in the short run. Whereas if you knew that all of your kids virtually were going to be involved in some of this other kind of experience, one way or the other, you, you wouldn't, there'd be times you wouldn't be seeking new math teachers, for example. Or if you did, you'd be seeking math teachers together with your community college or something like that. The problem for districts is if they're only losing a handful of kids to, let's say, outside experiences, but still have the same costs, that's where the money becomes a problem. But if they start to be able to plan for this money for whole cohorts of kids, that then I don't think you have the mismatch of staffing and revenue. You start to even out that, if I'm saying that correctly. We're going to work on a crisper way to think about that, but I think that's the essence of getting around. Because the other, otherwise the issue is tackling the whole thing, I propose LA again, and a lot of that other stuff, at least in the big picture, which is more difficult. I wasn't able to get live to the Milken, but I appreciate Paul being there and Bruce Umstead and Mark Pardell from our shop, and it, it's the $25,000 Milken Award, and it was, we did it from, you know, we have capability here, so we did it kind of from, from the room back here. And it's interesting when people think they're coming, it's a little embarrassing when I couldn't get up there because of a personal issue, and they think, well, they're all assembling in the gym, to hear the state superintendent, and he's not even here, you know, he's on a screen. But it's quickly forgiven when they realize in about two minutes, it has nothing to do with the state superintendent, it's an excuse to get the teacher up, and, and you reported that she just was, we could see, just, as you've always seen with these Milken things, they're really great response.
I just have to say that over the weekend, I had a chance to speak with one of these school board members that was in attendance for that.
Oh, a TBI.
And he, he was truly surprised, and he said that the feeling all week long since then was just one of pride throughout the city and for what, for what they have available at their schools. And he said it was one of the biggest boosts they'd had all fall, and so he wanted to thank us for that.
That's, that's great. Great to hear. We had kind of, I, when we're kind of, as departments, I don't even sign it permitted because that, that's overstating it, but once the budget process keeps moving, it was interesting that, that this governor used a different technique than the prior governor. And Governor Granholm had a good way to handle it, and Governor Snyder has a different and good way, but technically the department director goes in and talks about the department's budget. I brought a team of four people with me because, first of all, the truth is, they know a lot more about this than I do, and have really been great in it. more about this than I do, and have really been great in it. And Carol and Sally kinda led it, and then Carol Eastlick and Janet Laberty, who's our great new budget director, were there. And my only role was to come in since it was on Halloween with my Darth Vader helmet, and I put it out in front of me with the governor sitting right there and said, you know, "We need the money. We'll see if it works." And, but he did say it was the best presentation, and I, I think, I just wanna give a shout-out to our team. They did a great job in planning it. And they're very time and metric-oriented, I would say, so a lot of what the work was done, and when appropriate, when, we'll share that with you. I think you'd find it interesting, just even the, the way that the, the governor and budget director Nixon look at requests and how they translate it to metrics and kind of... Had a chance to talk at Social Studies Conference Friday, really good people, I mean, I was very impressed with them. Thanks for everything. You're, I know you're, I know you've been impacted even in kind of your regular life, you know, when you're not sitting here, by folks trying to understand more of the cut scores. I think the media did a, a good job in, in general. I, you saw the four retro scores, we're calling it, that I think helped districts start to think about what that looks like and, but I also know it's very helpful when, in a lot of the places that you're involved in, that people realize, you know, in effect, it's still gonna, it is still gonna be credit for growth, and we just ripped the Band-Aid off with the action the board took, and I think it was, I think it was the right one. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. Paul? Yes, ma'am?
When you made your presentation to the governor, was that strictly on the department budget, or was that on state aid needs?
We were asked for the first time, thoughts about state aid. I think they're getting the more direct feedback as they traditionally do from their budget office and...
Because, you know, Mr. Love reminded us, again, we, we bring it up every year, that we're supposed to be making recommendations, we, the board, as to the needs.
Yeah.
And we should be doing that.
Yeah.
And we need some data to help us do that. We should do it probably at the next meeting, no later than the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be appropriate. I think the, the thing that we get a, a little bit caught up in is, we are, even though we're independent in one sense, we are a department that's subject to the discretion of the governor and his team on how we will be funded or not. And so, we play by the rules, I guess I would say. But I don't think that, I don't think that differs from what you just said. I think for the board to take up, we've passed on all your recommendations by...
We've said this every year, we're gonna do this, you know, every...
Well, we have agenda planning every month, and you're always welcome, of course, to...
But we have to know that you're doing it, when you're doing it.
No, but, I'm making a different point, Kath. I think for the department, first of all, this is the first time we didn't even realize to the last minute, we were gonna be asked not to propose anything on state aid, to give some thoughts about state aid. And we did so. But I think, I think, I think we should probably have a placeholder if we know that's gonna how they're operating now, and we could probably do it the way you're suggesting. But it's not too late, I think, for the next meeting, which is where I thought you were going.
That's where I was going.
But even, even if we didn't have anything to say, I mean, I just wanna clarify this for a minute. Sometimes I, I'm always afraid to give this report because I'm afraid it becomes more critical sometimes than helpful. In this particular case, let's say it had been like it's always been for the last fifty years, that, that the department staff has nothing to say about that in terms from the governor's point of view. The board has always had that right and responsibility. So, it can always be on the agenda for the board to talk about and put in a transmittal to the governor. We've passed everything on to the governor and his team, and not just like in a perfunctory way. Rustam and much more and everyone know all the thought that went into what largely created, I don't wanna take away from the governor's thinking on this, but let's face it, if you look at the message, the message the governor delivered had substantial portions of it based on the thinking at this table that was transmitted to him. So, I guess the bottom line is, I think you're making a good point. I think we could at the next meeting, if you choose to, have some thoughts about the state aid and, and, and pass that along, in the same way that you did with the thoughts about education reform, and, and he listened and used a lot of it in his... I'm only making the point, it was kind of by happenstance at the last minute, they asked us to comment or get everybody, it was even worded. John?
We, we have, I think, in our recommendations for revenues and reforms a year and a half ago, and then in our recommendations earlier this year, tried to, you know, live up to our responsibility and provide the kind of broad direction, but I think it is, it is absolutely appropriate, and we should try to work together on, you know, the issue of the moment would be, okay, so what do we do with next year's budget, and particularly if there's two-hundred or four-hundred or five-hundred million dollars, you know? And, and I guess if we can work together to say, here's, here's those implications for how we would like to see money spent in education, and if we can be working together on that to be aligned, I think it's a very powerful alignment of what we'd like to see, and we should take advantage of that opportunity. I appreciate that.
And, and let me give you an example of one that I don't think I'd be talking out of turn or out of school to say this, 'cause I think everything we talked about is aligned with what John has just described. And I'll give you a specific example at the risk of maybe creating some other issue for the governor that I don't intend to, if you're watching. And that is that we're very much on record here...
I don't think we're being broadcast, are they?
As, what's that?
I don't think we're being broadcast.
Oh, okay, well, then I'm free. No, I mean, it's the thing, I'll give you, I'll give you the major...
Herman Cain press cut.
The major, the major example we gave him, that was based on the thinking at this table, that was in the very report John's talking about. And that was that there should be some money in the, of new money put into the, into the foundation itself, but some amount of money should be left, or should, and additional money should be a bonus for achievement. The discussion here, what's in our paper, and the idea being that we were asked, based on that, to bring some specifics about what a formula might look like. So, if I'm saying that more concretely than I did a minute ago, the idea's been discussed at this table, was in the paper that you described. It would be a bonus, not a penalty, a bonus that if you've got student achievement above, you know, growth, not raw scores. So, that was discussed here. We promoted that in our presentation. Joseph and his team put together some specific options for how one might measure that. And that's the, that's a, maybe a more concrete way for me to say, I think we're already on the same page in that we're promoting the very things that we've talked about here. We've been asked to put a little more meat on it, and in that case, the meat was the metric. So, I think the metric ended up, it doesn't mean the governor's gonna end it up this way, this is why I'm a little concerned about, let's just say, we proposed a metric that we thought was fair, based on elementary math and reading, and then some stuff related to the, to the Michigan Merit Exam at the high school level. So, that a district would kinda get credit for a, a well-rounded description of growth. It's a district foundation money, you can't break it down by building or class. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I think you'd be happy and proud of the fact that we followed the formula basically that was described here. We put a little bit more meat on it, to use that example, because then budget has to decide, okay, which they didn't share with us, they'll decide at some point, first of all, what is there money left, and if the money that's left, how much they might wanna put in that pocket. I think there's also a proposal, if I could be, I don't know, related, I'm going now, so if I'm in trouble, I'm just adding a little more to it, is, is the stuff that John's been a good advocate of for years now, with some specifics on how that might be accomplished with some allocation of money. So, I, we're, I think I can tell you we're fully aligned.
And we can do even more to be, to be recipe-baked for this stuff. I mean, that's the, that's what we should be doing. And Kathy, thanks again for your encouragement on things.
Yeah. But am I, seeing my point about how this is more aligned than maybe my first comment would lead one to think? We didn't come up with these, other than the general notions that were here at this table and the reports that we, we passed on to the governor.
This was on the agenda before.
Okay. Paul?
Thank you. As I stated in my report there, Ben had a wonderful opportunity this past month to speak at a lot of different conferences, meet with our educators across the state, which has just been phenomenal and a great learning opportunity for me. And we talk about being innovative in schools and projects that students are working with. Two of my colleagues, I attended their session at the Michigan Business Education Association, Project-Based Learning for Generation Y. And it was some wonderful opportunities and things that they've done with students, partnerships with Domino's, when David Brandon was there, and they did some product-market research. They partnered with some of the Oakland County initiatives that were going on with L. Brooks Patterson, some things that are happening with the Pistons. So, I mean, when we talk about project-based learning and pulling everything together, Tom Neal and Ryan Metusik, who teach in the BMMT program in Clarkston, they presented that, and the room was packed, and it was phenomenal, that teachers were willing to put in the extra effort and figure out how they could do some things within their programming to bring some of this project-based learning to their students, which was fantastic. I also had the opportunity to share what we're doing with America's Marketing High School on the entrepreneurship wing of the education and how we're moving some of that forward. So, that was, been a busy month and, and also a great learning opportunity. I'm gonna try to do this here, we've been fooling around with this, to see if this technology would work. I've got my, my iPad, or my iTouch here, and we're gonna see if we can show a, just a, a brief video of one of my students, and it relates around the MDA football frenzy last month between Michigan, Michigan State. We raised money through MDA by selling footballs, and obviously, if you wanted to support both and had a chance to win the prizes, because only the winning team, footballs were drawn for the prizes. So, those that had strong alliances and would never put their name on a U of M football or never would put their name on a Michigan State football. It was a lot of fun in our campus to do that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if this'll come up here. This is one of my students, actually, the MDA Student Chair. And of course, we're running into some difficulty. Hang on here, hang on. Okay, that's not the right one.
Maybe you wanna be careful, Paul.
Yeah. We had to like go to this video mode, and then I can switch back over to what's on my camera roll here. So, are we, are we seeing Zofia here?
Don't do it.
Nah, for some reason, well, this is a shame, 'cause she worked so hard on this. We had it all queued up right before lunch. I don't know, somebody might be able to help me out technically, but anyway, that's, that's too bad, because Zofia did a great job, and I wish I could show you that video there with regards to it, and I'm sorry that, for whatever reason, we're not able to do so. I've also had some opportunities to speak at some legislative breakfasts, where we have superintendents from around Oakland County, along with state legislators that have done an opportunity, provided an opportunity to see what we're doing within career and technical education, and then also, you know, some of the outcomes that are, that are moving forward. And obviously, a lot of discussion with the bills that are being looked at within legislation. As Mike indicated, I gotta tell you, one of the highlights of this year was being at that presentation in Traverse City West High School when Jolene Jenkins-Wall was awarded the Milken Educator Award. She's a tenth-grade chemistry teacher, and to be able to sit in that front row with Bruce Umstead and watch her reaction to when her name was announced, you, you can't describe what that was like, you know, from a fellow educator. She had no clue what was going on there, and what a wonderful person to represent that community. And, you know, as, just as Nancy said, there was a lot of people, and it's still continuing to have that conversation, which is fantastic, about the lift that it's given to that area. And in my December report, I'll be able to come back to share with you some of the things that we're trying to do to celebrate student success, and I'll, I'll have more details on that when we have an opportunity to do so. Also, wanna extend to the, to the board, the Network of Michigan Educators Conference is coming up in December. This will be my first time attending that. I'm actually presenting at that in Grand Rapids, and it's gonna be held at the Steelcase Global Headquarters. And that's on December eighth and ninth, and so I wanted to just make sure that you were aware of, of that opportunity as well. There's my colleague, Mike Bernanke, from America's Marketing High School. That's not the video we are attempting to go to. That's one of the podcasts we're working on. We're trying to take a look at the video here from Ms. Martin, and if you'll just give me one second here, I will get to it, and I think we're gonna have it. There we are. Thank you so much.
Greetings from Oakland School's Technical Campus Southeast. My name is Zofia Martin the Fourth, and I'm the MDA Student Chair here at the campus. Behind me, you can see our Football Frenzy Wall, where students at our campus have purchased U of M footballs and footballs representing Michigan State. All the footballs cost a dollar, and all of our proceeds go to MDA, where they send students to summer camp that is here in our state, Michigan. Here at the campus, we've raised over six hundred dollars, and with the help of our corporate sponsors, we've raised a total of nine hundred dollars. Thanks for watching.
Well, unfortunately, on the other side of the wall, the lighting in the hallway was, this was the best place for it, so I apologize to the Wolverines there. We do, hey, we, we do have some photos, though, that I could share with you as well, that does show the full picture of what is there. But anyway, you know, Zofia, just, you know, as we look at what students are able to do, she's chaired our MDA fundraiser, she's a senior now, she's studying IT, and what a great way to give her an opportunity to work. And when we talk about being involved in the community and its civic responsibility, these are one of the areas that the students are able to demonstrate that, but more importantly, learn about it and engage at the community. So, I was very pleased. Thank you so much for making that video possible. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I had an opportunity to speak with a group of administrators here in Lansing, and the topic was administrators, you know, help your, help your teachers be successful. And as we are looking at a collaborative approach and doing things more and more together with the teacher leadership programs that are out there and what administrators are willing to do, in this day in education of how we do education, that collaboration is a must. And we've been able to do that, and I was very fortunate to be asked by Patty Cantu and Dr. Mahoney at the Office of Career and Technical Education to speak to the administrators for that particular topic. And one final note, the fourteenth of November, we are going to, or I'm going to have a ceremonial delivery of the use of a car for a year, thanks to Mimic, who are gonna be delivering a 2012 Chevy Equinox. And I also wanna, yeah...
That's what they tell you.
What's that?
That's what they tell you.
Well, yeah. And, and I, Mimic and Pam Harland and the people there for making that possible, along with Sundance Chevrolet, who has been able to get a one-year lease.
Right, he's doing his job, giving him the pitch for it.
Yeah.
Was that Sundance Chevrolet?
Sundance Chevrolet, yeah, Troy Andrews. But those guys...
Paul wears, Paul wears his NASCAR jacket when he speaks, it's kinda got all of the...
Let me tell you that...
Where's Sundance Chevrolet? And what are the hours?
Yeah, the hour, they're on the website.
Sorry, I'm letting this get away, it's my fault.
I have to tell you, the, the thing is, trying to find a year lease is next to impossible. And Mimic worked extremely hard to be able to work out a one-year lease, and so I thank them and do that. So, it'll be a fun day for the students, they're gonna get a chance to do it, 'cause that's all anybody cares about now, what's happening. Did you get your car yet? What's your car like? Did you get it yet? So, anyway, thank you for that, and that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Paul. By the way, we, we hope the board didn't notice that just 'cause you can't get a parking spot or into the building or anything like that, but Paul can actually get a whole car. I mean, it's not like, it's not like there's any distinction.
How much we value teachers, right?
We've, we've, we've never been, you know, Board Members of the Year, that's why.
Right, right, true. Doing a great job, though, a lot of positive feedback about Paul in the field, so thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
And I was suggesting we maybe reverse because of Eileen, but maybe she's left already. I don't, I didn't know if we wanted, did you wanna...
Do you wanna do the charter school document now?
What?
I'm sorry, the charter choice resolution. I'm sorry, anti-bullying.
I thought, oh, surprise.
Right, surprise. Here we go. Another unilateral action. Here we go, right.
I literally stopped breathing. I thought, oh, my God, he's actually going to.
Now that you mention it, I just happen to have that.
Yeah. Right, Lisa, come on down. We're going to, no, no. Lisa, why don't we wait a minute? Lisa, why don't we wait?
I think.
John can go.
The topic du jour, so thank you, everybody, for, I think there's enough to go around. I think the importance of us describing again, given the good, the debate, I won't say it's good, but the legislation, I think it's important for us to reaffirm the nature of, the character of, the anti-bullying legislation that we expect to see and want to help see passed. Appreciate everybody's contributions to this statement, which generally reiterates our position and points out the key features of what effective anti-bullying state legislation needs to include. There were just a couple more grammatical suggestions or changes that are strictly grammar that Mary Ann had, which I have on my sheet. So, before I can, I can tell you what those are, I think everyone's had a chance to weigh in and review this and I welcome a motion and/or some comments about the importance of doing this and hope it's something we can get done together.
Well, I would make a motion to accept this statement on anti-bullying legislation so that we start the conversation.
Second.
It was moved by Nancy and supported by Cassandra. And now for discussion, comments, alterations. Richard, please.
I very much appreciate the care that has gone into this. I think I stated we form a little dubious on the value of bullying policies so-called. I think the real issue is empowering teachers, administrators on the local level. But I think that in calling for an effective policy that keeps students free from threat intimidation and harassment that's fair, clear and effective, I think that is really the heart of the matter where we all agree and I can support it.
Thank you. Other?
Thank you, Richard.
Other comments?
Kathy's got a couple grammatical suggestions too, which I'll review those in a second. Eileen, before she left, she did have to get a plane. She signaled her support for this, so I appreciate that.
Nancy?
I would just say that, and maybe this is what Kathy's pointing out here, but the second paragraph, I find it difficult to follow. If I didn't know John Austin and know Johnisms, I would find it difficult to follow. So, I'm just suggesting that perhaps there's a clearer way that we might put that second paragraph. I keep finding myself. So, that's my only suggestion.
Well, I'd just like to thank Jen for your patience on all of this and different iterations.
Thank all. It's important for us to, together with Mike, be clear about the nature of what we think will be effective and how important it is.
You've done a better job on this than I did, so.
Let me review. As awkward as it may be, the second paragraph, I think, makes sense unless people want to rewrite it. Let me give you the grammatical changes that were suggested, which I think are fine. Working kind of backwards from the last paragraph, we strongly urge and strike to, urge the legislature, in the last bullet, after it underlined all students be protected from bullying instead of are protected from bullying. The second bullet at the end of the first line, personnel, instead of that, who, is that correct, Mary Ann? And personnel who do not nurture should not be, that was nurture, not nurture, I think that's, isn't that that Australian stuff you put, that horrible stuff you put on with peanut butter? No. Don't go there. My son loves that.
Isn't that Dutch, Nancy? I thought that was Dutch.
Well, the Australians have their own really bad stuff. What's the really bad Australian stuff? It's some sort of horrible Vegemite. Oh, ooh, let's not let that in here.
Yeah.
And then.
That would be bullying.
The second sentence from the top, a little more substantive, safe and secure climate for learning can and must be created was an hour suggestion by President Amherst. Can and must.
So, were those minimum, minimal changes? Nancy, what are you thinking?
Well, we still didn't talk about the second paragraph.
Right, I was just trying to.
What would you?
If there's a way to fix it, well, I'm certainly open to it.
Why don't we just put a period after November 2010 and just say joined.
There we go.
By our Superintendent of Public Instruction, the State Board of Education vigorously advocated.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, you'd tell this woman's written a PhD.
Don't remind me.
Any further discussion? Call a question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you very much. If I could just comment, I think, I have to say, I was concerned when some of the papers, I think, overreacted and used words about the board factions based on what I think some of you were doing in good faith based on last month's discussion. But I think this is a good example, again, of there aren't factions. People can disagree on some issues and feel strongly about that. That's different than suddenly, once they start using that word, and it came out in two key articles I saw that concerned me. So, on its own right, this is really important to do. Can't thank you enough. Did it thoughtfully and as you said, John, I think helped craft this with skill to get consensus. But I think it also has that other byproduct to kind of have people realize we can disagree occasionally, but that doesn't mean we're not, we don't work together very well as a board, so thank you for that.
You know, I think, I have to say, I think that that's a reminder that we should never let the media define who we are. We define ourselves and who we are and what we do and it may mean that we don't always agree on things.
Right.
So, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone and I just don't think it needs to be something that we let the media rule on, even though they will try to.
And could I, Kate?
You figured out how not to let them speak about that.
I don't read. I don't read the papers. So, you know, if you don't, I read them, of course, but you just can't let that get to you.
Absolutely.
You'll go crazy.
I would say this if I could. The reason I was reemphasizing this is I think largely it's what you're inferring, Mary Ann, that they paint pictures. I do think, and I'm supportive of board doing as they see fit as sub-board members to contribute to the media and as you did this last month. I would say, I still think that's important for you to decide when to do that and when not and you have every right to, but it also does leave a feeling of faction. That's what I'm getting at and even when that's not the intent. So, it's not just that they say it, they see one set of board members writing X and a different set writing Y and not only entitlement appropriate, I thought these were thoughtfully and well-done and I thought it was a good attempt to make up for what we couldn't quite pull off at the last meeting, you know, and still weigh in. But I'm only saying that I think this action today then reaffirms that more often than not, there's not going to be the need for these kind of separate, appropriately separate, but separatenesses kind of.
So, we moved that Charter Choice discussion.
That's why we all just about died here, John, for a minute.
Or communications policy, let's try that again.
And then you have the inclusive.
Given that, in addition to news coming out on the Indiana schools, can we release some version of this or post this as a good release statement, given the timing? Can we put out this statement as a good statement coming out of this meeting?
Yep.
I think that would be timely and valuable.
Well, we didn't. I thought I called the vote.
They did vote.
We voted.
We did.
Yeah. Pay attention.
That's how smoothly it all went.
Right. That's why I was complimenting it, Marty, and it just ruined the whole stream of consciousness here. Now, he is to be excused. It's his birthday and he's drinking vodka all day, I think.
Hey, now that's a lot, no.
No, that's not true.
It was interesting, I thought, that the president of ECS talked about our breaking down the barriers between the parties, which we have.
Yeah.
But nationally, that they recognize that, that's kind of good.
Maybe he should write an editorial.
They want to sink together for the times in the state, don't they?
You're right. He'll never come back here again.
That's right.
And now, I know you also added an appropriately inclusive schools week.
Right.
John, did you want to take that?
I think you gave me.
This, by the way, this is within, Marty, this is just within our routine where we would always.
Yeah.
Total board, blah, blah, blah.
So, you saw the desire and we'll have to make sure we don't omit attention to these items without Liz's encouragement, but it is Inclusive Schools Week and we've done a good resolution in the past in the spirit of that and honor of that, proclaiming the week of December 5th through 9th, Michigan Inclusive Schools Week, celebrating the theme Awareness to Action Moving Forward, which focuses on how schools can make progress on their journey toward excellence. So, I would move the support for the adoption of the resolution regarding Inclusive Schools Week. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Supported by John, supported by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Cap?
The only thing I have to ask is, I thought this was about universal education.
I thought it was too, but it's not. It's related. So, I apologize. I was trying to remember what Liz's recommendation was.
Our policy was universal education and that's what, and so when you said that, I thought we were just going to reiterate that, which I didn't know why, but I thought if people wanted to, so be it, but this is something else, huh? Last year you approved Inclusive Schools Week and she had sent a previous.
Which I couldn't find. Please do that again. I apologize.
No, no, that's all right. I'm easily just, you know, just drawing on target for the new people.
Are we good?
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. And last, certainly not least, Lisa, why don't you come out and join us? There is still a lot in the pipeline here, let's just let it be. And I think you're all feeling good about the, we do, about the legislative committees and you're working through that means to more regularly bring things to the board?
Oh, yeah.
Board subcommittee, I mean, on legislation, I think works really well. Lisa, please.
I was going to start with a joke by saying, had you guys heard that the anti-bullying bill moved last session? I mean, last week? Okay.
Moving, right. We heard about that.
On the, on the House floor today and tomorrow, they're taking up two appropriations bills. One is the follow-up to the governor's executive order moving some things from DHS to MDE and now this is the budget bill that moves the funding to go with the actual move. So, that's moving on the House floor. And then there's also a move to appropriate some funds for a pre-K assessment to try to get at improving pre-kindergarten programming because there's no assessments currently in that. Those are on general orders today on the Senate floor and are expected to pass the entire Senate this week still before the hunting break or the fall break. They don't call it hunting break anymore. The other things are obviously the anti-bullying bill. I don't know that that'll have any other action. There was a rumor that it might be up in House Education tomorrow, but they posted for tomorrow and it's not on the agenda. So, the only thing on the agenda for tomorrow is the Senate Bill 618, which is the charter legislation, just the main, the big charter bill that has the cap in it. We had sent over some suggested changes, we, the staff, I sent over these and a lot of it was aligned with, I think I'd shared it with you this past week, but it was aligned with previous reports that the board had sent over, public school, PSA, the legislative report. I'm not sure, they've addressed some of those things in the new draft. For example, familial relationships was addressed in the newest draft, but I think there's still a few of the issues that the board has raised in previous PSA reports that are not included in there, like addressing wind-up and dissolution. And so, we'll still, I'll still push that if, you know, as they're moving, as long as they have this open, wouldn't it be great if they address these issues that the board has raised time and time again? Tomorrow also, Senate Education is meeting again on the Pledge of Allegiance Bill, which is Senate Bill 637. They do have a substitute and the main thing that the substitute adds is that a pupil cannot be compelled against the pupil's objections or those of their parents to recite the pledge, so it includes an out, so to speak, an opt-out for pupils that don't wish to recite the pledge. There's still a question that the schools have raised about headly issues because it does require a flag in every classroom. Currently, there's a requirement that there be a flag at every building. This would say a flag in every classroom or instructional setting. And so, there is a cost involved and some of the schools, I think, have been raising that.
Veterans support work, provide that free charge.
Beyond, beyond that, the, we're going to have the fall break in, after this week and then they'll have three weeks of session in December. My guess is we'll see a flurry of activity as we always do right before the holidays. They have a lot of bills lined up, ready for action. For example, the two approaches bills I just mentioned still have to go a little further, the charter legislation, the dual enrollment legislation that we talked about earlier. I think that the House wants to address the anti-bullying legislation and based on comments to the press, it is likely that it will not match what the Senate passed. The question then is if it, when it goes back to the Senate, will the Senate concur on whatever changes the House provides?
And there seems to be commentary that would suggest that.
There's been some outstanding editorials on it.
Some very thoughtful, yeah.
They had, radio stations, they had a great call.
Really?
I listened to the way down here that I was just like, wow, that's a point, oh, that's a point.
It's got the end of the WJR.
Yeah.
Paul W. Smith was waxing supportive of anti-bullying.
Yeah, that's this morning.
And the only other piece is the House Approves, oops, I'm sorry. The only other piece was the House Approves Subcommittee is continuing its hearings on technology consolidation. They seem to be focusing in on student data systems and so SEPI has been very involved because obviously that's their balaic. That's all I have.
You know, and if I could just say on the bullying thing, I think just because we're giddy at the end of the day, I mean, in case people don't know us, it is a really serious issue. This may not be the only way to try to address it, but, you know, a lot of kids have suffered to say the least and I think it's noteworthy that legislature and the board and other parties are trying to accommodate it and deal with it in a thoughtful way. That's all positive. And Lisa's does a, I think you see this, but does a great job and sometimes she's, there's balls in the air, things move. You saw some of her notes during the week. I mean, before you know it, something's up that wasn't anticipated to be up. So, that's one reason I'm also appreciative of the board having kind of regular meetings as best we can at the legislative committee to try to catch some of that. Anything else, Lisa? Any comments or questions, John?
Maybe while Lisa's here, Mary Ann just suggested maybe that statement we just did could be quickly sent to the legislators or the relevant legislators from us.
At least the Education Committee.
I intended to have it go over immediately.
And we'll send the entire, through the entire legislature.
And we didn't recapitulate all the reasons why this is so important and there was just that study by the AAUW that came out that was saying 60% of all women and a lot of young men are feeling sexually bullied, intimidated, harassed and we all know a lot of kids and families who have real suffering because of this, so we didn't want to, thank you, Mike, suggest that this was not the most, a very important, serious issue.
Anything else for Lisa? Thank you. We're moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Oh, excuse me. I just, I just thought of something. What's, whatever happened on that Sharia law, law proposal?
I believe a bill was introduced and nothing further. I don't, I have not heard anything about any hearings even being planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy?
The Legislative Committee, the 21st.
Okay.
I would just ask that we.
I would just ask that we, I have one question on this Baker College, someone asked that we take that off the consent act and just put it on the regular action item.
Okay, permission of the board, let's, sound okay? Let's do that, but let's vote on the consent agenda first. Motion?
We should remove the consent item formally, then, before we vote on it, just to be sure.
I would agree that we, that we remove Item J, approval of Baker, can't speak, Baker College as teacher preparation institution with probationary approval.
Okay, that was moved by Nancy, it was supported by Cassandra.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? So, now a motion for the rest, the remaining part of the consent.
We approve of the consent agenda.
Moved by Kathy, supported by Nancy. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Support.
Well, motion carried.
Yeah. Let's see. And now, let's have a motion on the Baker.
I move approval of Baker College, Item J.
Moved by John, supported by Dan, Dan supported. And now, discussion.
And I, my apologies, I didn't see this on the consent agenda.
It's fine.
It's my fault, well, but there's nobody here that can address it, so.
Well, I guess we do, we have people here.
Floor is unaware.
Oh, is she? Okay.
Plus, Tom's here, I think, is fairly.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see what he gives.
And, you know, I, I'll just, I'll just say this, that it's not a matter of being prescient, but when I was asked at lunch, well, it's on the consent agenda, so everything's good, I said, well, you know what, I would stay. I never know, so I appreciate your patience in waiting and I think it's a question.
And my apologies for not seeing that on the consent agenda.
That's okay.
The one question, well, wait, the one que-
You can ask us and we'll act like we know and then.
Yeah, there we go. This is a question that, that staff and any probationary teacher preparation institution that comes before us is probably going to get tired of hearing me ask this. However, there's a section in their proposal where it talks to response to Michigan specific standards, rules and guidelines, and I'd asked about this last time, couldn't find it, and they said, well, we'll make sure it's clear. I still can't find it. I have a real concern with any teacher preparation institution that talks about standards, rules and guidelines and does not include information in their, in their classes on student assessment. There's all kinds of places in here that talks about the teacher candidate assessment and how teachers self-evaluate, but there's no class that I can find in here or no inst- no parts under this response to Michigan specific standards, rules and guidelines, which is, is number three, it's on page, I think it's on page one of nine there, but.
What page is it?
Well, it says one of nine on my, it's hard to tell on this screen because I know that it's farther back than one of nine. It's under, let's see if I can go back here. If you look under Teacher Preparation Program on their website, which is the link that we were given, there are 10 places, 10 things you can click on. One is standards and rules. If you click on that, then the first thing that you see is the response to Michigan Standards, Rules and Guidelines. You click on that again and the first thing that comes up is the curriculum that has to deal with the learning communities and everything that they're learning. It talks about all kinds of things, professional education, exceptional learners, psychology, reading, theory and techniques, directed teaching, all of this stuff. When you click on the 451 it refers to, it talks all about what they should look at, which is all great stuff, but nothing in there and it's the only thing I could find that even closely came to assessment and evaluation.
Assessment of students, correct?
Yes.
They've aligned to the professional standards of Michigan teachers, which standard four or five shows their assessment abilities and the student, the teacher candidate's ability to show and demonstrate their not only ability to assess students, but use assessment in the classroom to change instruction. And that was reviewed during their elementary application, unit review, which was part of the write-up I wrote about.
Then why wasn't it here? I mean, if we're supposed to be approving of this, and that's a question we have, and I made that clear before this even was put on the agenda, and then I made it clear the last time it was brought to us, that I was concerned I didn't see that. Why doesn't it appear here? I mean, I don't doubt you, that's great, but it would have been so much easier if I'd seen it.
Well, I think maybe part of it is that in each of the content areas, that they address it there and it's not necessarily here, but, I mean, we can.
No, that's fine. If it's there, that's fine.
This is, this is probably on me. I wasn't clear if that was that concrete an issue at the last meeting, so what could we do to?
It's been a concrete issue with every one of these schools that's come before us for me. I just, I see too much evidence of that not happening, that that's what I want to make sure it does happen.
Okay.
And if it is, it is. That's great. I just need to see it.
Yeah, if we could, I mean, if we could even show you one of the, the content areas, they address it in each of the content areas.
That's good to know. That's good to know.
Can you walk through that for a moment?
Can you pull up on the content area?
Just so I understand, you're saying it is absolutely included, the ability to use assessment as one of the key standards, it's just not included in this description? It's included by reference or associate?
Right, because when we, when they initially started the approval process, they were under standards that, and guidelines that were very old and what Mrs. Danhoff asked us to do is show, or at least assert that they were meeting current standards, and I thought I had addressed that briefly in the language change that I had made and I apologize for not being more clear and providing specific detail.
Well, and I apologize for not being more clear evidently.
And so, when, when I started this process with them about a year, and I'm the third consultant that's worked with this, this institution because they've been in it for a while. When I started the process, one of the things that Dr. Schramm and I discussed is showing evidence that they are aligning to key current practices and standards, and they've shown alignment to the professional standards. I didn't link to that, actually, it's on the, that is in their, their board, it is in the document that is attached to this item.
Yeah, and I've.
Chris, do you remember where it's at?
Chris, why don't you? Thank you. If you could join us and clear this up. We understood your issue, Nancy, so I think we didn't understand it where you, how you thought it needed to be demonstrated and maybe we haven't done that.
When it, when it shows all of the classes that they have, that they're required to have, and then you go to those descriptions of classes and nowhere in there does it mention assessment.
So, if you go on, under their website?
Yeah, and I'm trying to find it again. I clicked off.
It's baker.edu.
Okay.
Can I hook a Mac up to this, so I can put it up on the screen?
Yeah. You want to go off of this? Just don't use Paul's iPhone.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. That was all being inferred to, there was no evidence.
So, baker.edu, where am I going from there?
Forward slash departments.
Okay.
Well, or maybe not. Hope here's goes easy.
Just baker.edu or Baker College? No, just baker.edu. Okay, I've got their teacher preparation program up here.
Tom's trying to bring it up on the screen so everyone can see it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, this is, this is the professional standards for Michigan teachers, which was part of the board document, and I actually had linked to it a couple of times throughout the board item that I sent you. The assessment piece, is it two? Oh, instructional design and assessment, I'm sorry, standard two. So, this is all the evidence that they've shown, most of it is input evidence because at this point, their outcome data is still, they're not an approved institution, so, but this is where their, their candidates are going through the process of having the skills and, getting prepared to have the skills and abilities to utilize various assessment and instructional design and manipulate instructional design based on assessment. And so, this is their narrative for that.
Yeah.
So, and it's all related back to their conceptual framework and their student, student learning outcomes.
Okay, show me where the assessment is.
What's that?
Okay, I see it under SLO number nine and 10.
And it should be, we have assessment.
edu321.
Right, it's threaded throughout our course.
That's fine, that's fine. I just didn't see it and I had a difficult time finding it and that's why I wanted to ask.
Sure, absolutely.
So, and I'm glad to see it threaded throughout because quite frankly, in my mind, that's the way it should be done. So often in these preparation institution reports to us, they've got a separate section under assessment and evaluation, and that's what I was looking for, so this is great. And I'm sorry to have waited this long, I really thought we were going to have another discussion. My apologies.
No, that's okay. We need clarity and if you're comfortable.
Yep.
It's hard to find some of these things, maybe that's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're.
And if you can't find it, we can't find it.
But then it's good that it's there and that's what I was really concerned about.
I mean, these are, they are complicated by nature, so, but it's always helpful to understand more what you're driving at and then maybe we, I think Tom, at any rate.
Here's, here's why I'm driving at this and so maybe this will help in the future for others that might come after this. We are so intent on saying that one size does not fit all, that one test does not say everything. The only way to get around that and be appropriate, have appropriate oversight and reaction in terms of whether or not kids are learning is to have ongoing assessments. Instead of, some of, we have formative assessments. When we first started this process, I was told by too many teacher preparation institutions that that kind of delineation in, in assessment was taught at a master's degree level and they didn't get into it at, at the bachelor's degree level. And I'm thinking for crying out loud at the bachelor's degree levels where you need it the most. So, they've worked at getting that put in there, but if we're going to go away from one test telling everything, we have to prepare teachers in a way that allow them the capacity to be able to assess on an ongoing basis and have that learned prior to getting into school, which gets back into our learning communities again after they get to school, after they get hired into school. If they haven't learned this as a, as a student, it's a heck of a way to get introduced to it once they're hired. So, that's why I always look for that, because that's something near and dear to my heart. So, thank you.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, it is in the board item that was initially sent, it's in, under ID2K.
Oh, good.
I understand that it's a voluminous report, I think, I don't remember the term that Sally made fun of me for using last time, but, yeah. It is an arduous process in both writing and reading this, so I know that stuff gets missed and I apologize.
I love, it's, this is a sad thing about me, I actually like reading those things.
Yeah, me, me too.
I really don't have a life.
Right. I'm trying to get through War and Peace for the first time, so I get that.
My kids have left home too.
Very good. Well, I think what I'm hearing though is, given that view that Nancy's expressing, we could probably find a way to cut through all that to demonstrate it quicker and then we won. Okay?
Kirk.
But I think everyone's done what we, what Nancy and the board hope, but we'll see in a minute because there's still a vote, so you still need, still need to worry, Ed, you know, I mean, they're wondering if you've helped them or not and Baker folks have been very patient.
Ed was very influential in getting this thing done here.
Yeah, there we go.
Ed says, we can leave at lunch. I said, I don't, I don't know, I, I wouldn't leave. But we have a motion, it was supported. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay, thank you for that and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, Flora. Baker, congratulations and appreciate the relationship. Comments by, by board? Cap?
I have a few things I want to mention. One is the.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Wrong direction.
Message brought to you by, what's, what's the car dealership again, Paul? Where'd you get that SUV? Was that Sunday on Civil Lane?
The B-32.
The problem is, you know, you guys don't talk into the mics either, it's hard to hear you down.
We are now.
Yes. Barry White, we're going to do Barry White.
The students who were here presenting on diversity and how they were invited to diversity, well, there's going to be a follow-up conference based with those students and the new students who are involved in Birmingham on November 11th, Friday, and from one to three or one to four, there's a community participation, people should come to that. And it's at the Birmingham Conference Center, which is attached to Groves High School at 13 Mile and Evergreen. And I wanted to have, that's really an outgrowth of our, the presentation and our endorsement, really, of what they were saying.
And we shouldn't say this because we want to encourage people to come, but Paul and I are both participating in that panel there.
Oh, good.
Well, I'm not coming there.
So, that, that was one thing.
What time is it?
That's 1:00 with the community part. There are workshops in the morning, but there, I think those are for the students more and the community in the afternoon. I wanted to mention to you that I was at the board meeting of the REEL Midwest and there were several very good studies reported on, and one was on student popul-, how do you determine poverty in the student population? And it's interesting because yesterday was the announce, was a couple of days ago announced that the federal government is changing the way it defines poverty and making it more realistic. It includes differences in cost of living in different parts of the country and different parts of states for that matter, for urban versus rural and vice versa, and, and other, other parts, whether the income includes supports like food stamps and that kind of thing. So, anyway, it was very, it was bringing out a lot of questions that I had had in my head but never really gave it much thought and it was, to hear this, the last couple of days was, was a follow-up. Then there was a study on the changes, the reforms that were put into place in the Chicago Public Schools for turning around the schools and they used the things that are part of NCLB now or ESEA if we want to call it that. And the, the interesting part was it didn't make much difference. There was very little difference in the schools that were adopted those changes and the comparison schools, it didn't. So, that gives us pause, I think. These, these studies are all available on the REEL website, which I have here someplace, but I'll, I can tell you what it is. Then another thing I wanted to mention is that Marilyn Kelly, Justice Marilyn Kelly, who was on this, I think it was the first board after the Constitution was adopted and was became president of the board, was inducted into the Women's Hall of Fame last week, and Anetta Miller, who was on this board for 24 years and the last year was co-president, celebrated her 90th birthday last week, which I thought was, she's still on the Wayne State Board, incidentally, sharp as a tack. And the other thing I wanted to tell you all is that I don't, I don't have to put this on the recorder, is that George Bauer, Liz's husband, has cancer, stage four cancer, so it's not, the outlook is not positive. So, if any of you want to send emails, emails are the best way to communicate with her. Phones, she's busy all the time. So, I thought people might want to know that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cap. Any other comments from the board? John?
This is a small item. My email box is filling up with emails asking the department to put, make an Arab-American designation on our testing forms and a lot of them are coming from out of state. We do have a big Arab-American population. I assume there is no census nor other clearly consistently used demarcation of that ethnicity that is there for us to embrace, I presume.
It's a big controversy.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to note that, but also to ask what, if anything, we, one can say to these 500 million email people, some of whom are constituents.
Many are not.
Forward, one or two of them, maybe?
Sure.
And then I can.
To our Arab-American board member?
Well, maybe, can I ask if, if Allison could hook up with you, we're preparing a kind of a, a response that we think's appropriate. They're all, they're all online petition, automatic.
Like auto-generated.
So, we feel comfortable in giving, almost an auto-generated response. A lot of this has to do with just the feds and their designation and the rest.
But see, there's been a big controversy. But see, there's been a big controversy within the community about whether or not to ask for this, or to keep things the way they are.
Okay. Would that be okay for Allison to touch base with you?
Absolutely.
And be comfortable, John, that it will work out? Then the intent is, I mean, mine's filling up, too, and we, we wrote each other over the weekend. Because I, originally it was, is there any downside to just trying to allow that? It turns out it's more complicated than that. And at first I thought, why not accommodate it and make people comfortable with what they're filling out in their own test book, but it's, it's not quite that simple, as you know. So that's what we'll do? Good with that, John? And then, so you can erase them if, or delete them if you want, and we'll, Allison will respond on all of our behalf. Okay?
One question.
Yes, because I'm.
There are items out for public comment right now, I believe, on teacher certification, teacher preparation. Can you, can someone send us a link to where we can find those updates?
Sally, you have a easy?
That'd be great.
Carol Islick, yeah.
Thank you.
And, you know, a little bit of that, and I don't know how to say this, but this is a culmination of a lot of years, in a way, of different parts. We've created a bit of a camel that was intended to be a horse. And that's one reason you have the, and it's one reason I jumped out ahead when we realized that one nuance, and thought, you know, we're definitely not going to do that, so why would we have everyone getting anxious about it? And secondly, our own folks, then. There, hearings can be very tough. So it's not only was the right thing to do, and if we're going to do it anyway, why wait till the end? So I issued whatever it was, a statement or something. The other was that our guys are, they do a good job on going around the state at these hearings, and they don't need to necessarily be beat up about something that's not going to happen. But, yes, we'll get you all that direct link. Okay?
Okay.